The November twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen Town Council meeting. Roll call, please. Mary Bill?
Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Andy Key.
Present.
Trey Robey.
Here.
Luke Gier.
Present.
Tyson Hacking.
Here.
Matt Belgrin.
Here.
Rich Garnett.
Here.
Tyson, would you mind leading us in the invocation?
Our dear Penn Henry Father, we're grateful for the many opportunities that we have and for the service that we can contribute. We ask thee to bless us that we can focus on the town and be able to help the town progress. Bless us to do what is right and we're grateful for the men and women that have served in our military, for the sacrifices that they've made. Bless them to be comforted and filled with love. We love thee and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Lisa, would you mind leading us into the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five, Meeting of the Minutes, Discussion and Action to Approve the Meeting of the Minutes of the November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Make motion to move to approve the minutes in the meeting, November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Motion's been made by Trey. Second. Second by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions and public input. I think we'll just wait till we get down to your section. Lisa? Okay. Welcome, Alden.
Nope. Thank you. Some of you I don't know. I'm Alden Van den Brink. I'm the district manager for the Rio Blanca Water Conservancy District. And I wanted to update you a little bit about what we've got going on. This is a really strong microphone, by the way. And especially mostly pertaining to the reservoir project. About two weeks ago, week and a half ago, we were awarded another grant from the state, the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That grant will be used for seven key items for us, but a couple of primary items that are really coming out of there is we're going to be doing a recreation plan for this project and then a purpose and need for the project. And that purpose and need is kind of and one of the things that I'll elaborate a little bit more here on briefly, but one of the important things that I wanted to share with you folks as well, and I'll be expressing more of this with my board tomorrow night, is the strong words of commitment that came from the state of Colorado. Their water czar, or wrong term there, John Stolt, and another high-ranking official within the state that had asked as part of this grant, since the state is funding half of this project right now, or of this study right here that we're getting ready to do, or this task, it's not a study, is that Colorado needs to store water, too. And Colorado's looking very keenly at the White River to store a substantial amount of water. Now, we don't know what that volume is yet. That's for them to figure out. But the words that came from them was, "You build us a dam, you build a dam because Colorado needs to store water." That came from them two gentlemen in two independent discussions. I'll be talking more with my board tomorrow night about that in greater detail. But they're also getting prepped up right now to where there's a transition team for the new governor coming in. Our project is part of that transition. And it's the only water project of this magnitude being carried forward underneath the new new project, underneath the new administration coming into our state. So that's very exciting. And our goal with this is to, by October first, and we'll ratify this tomorrow night, is to file for our notice of intent to permit for this reservoir on October first of this, of next year. So we've got a whole lot of time, a whole lot of activities to get done here prior to filing for that notice of intent. Remember, that's still a goal, but that is our goal, is to file next year and to get all our financial partners in role, or in lined up for that. So, but with that purpose and need statement, we're also working on getting our water rights for that, all lined up. You've seen a letter that was submitted to you a couple of weeks ago. We got the same letter. Really, within that letter, there's nothing of real concern that we didn't know we had to answer anyway. So it's no real surprise in there. But at the same time, I know the town of Rangel is going through their diligence right now, too, for their water rights. And the last time I went through that with the town, they were taking, they were trying to take about eighty percent of the town's water right. Peter and I worked quite a bit on that with SGM Engineering. And recognizing where the state's going with their water, it's going to get a whole lot harder to maintain any of your water rights if you don't have a plan for these water rights to put into beneficial use. As I'm finding out, we just did here, ours here just a couple of weeks ago, and finally got it resolved. It took us over two years to get that. Usually takes six months, but I see with us moving forward, my board's looking at doing a master plan next year for their water rights as well. And I think there's an opportunity here for, with Rangel, since we're doing our master plan for our water rights, for the two of us to probably put our heads together and help the community with their water rights to develop a vision. As we're doing the same thing out there, we're trying to do a vision not only for Rangel, Colorado, but for actually Western Colorado and the state of Colorado, where this vision's actually growing. And I think it's an opportune time for us to kind of sit down and start working very collaboratively together on developing these water rights that we have. And doing a formal plan. This is just me kind of talking, recognizing what I've seen happen in the state, and it's just a recommendation, because I think there's some good that we can really come together by putting our brains at work. Because it's really, when you do your mass, your plan coming up here and your diligence, you can kind of choose for the stars, folks. It's really what it is. It's your vision of what you see for your community, so. And from what I'm learning, I think there's some benefit that you could share with us for us to include with what we're doing out there as well. And the time is, really seems to be right here, so. I know next week, I've been talking with Jocelyn. I've talked with other town staff. I've talked with other county and state people. It really seems like we're getting real close to having something formal happen here, so. I don't want to take any more of your time, but I just wanted to make sure I shared that with the board, because I think it's, or the council, because I think it's, the time is about prime for that to happen, so. If the opportunity happens and you want to work collaboratively with us, we would welcome that at the Rio Blanca Water Conservancy District. And to, I think we can complement each other very well, so.
Great, thanks, Alden.
Be careful, I ask a question.
No, absolutely not.
Just, is there anything we as a board can do to better prepare ourselves maybe for that conversation? Like, is there any suggestions you might throw out that would be things we should possibly possibly consider thinking about? We'll put it that way.
If there's any, it's kind of like I said, it's, the sky's the limit. But if you have anything in mind that might be water-related to develop water within Rangel or Rangel, that pertains maybe to your water rights, or maybe that would help be an economic driver for your community, an irrigation system. I know that's expensive. I was part of that study. I understand it. I, more so than what I can share with you right now, but if you have a new industry, maybe that would be, you use a substantial amount of water. It's really prime to be thinking, if you had an unlimited water supply, all your water needs were met, what could you do with it? Where could you go with it? What could that provide? It's Rangel's vision statement, not the state's. Not the feds. It's Rangel. You dictate what happens here. And too much of that comes from where the state tells you, "I don't think Rangel's quite going to grow that much." Hmm, who are you to say that? That's our vision as Rangel, not yours. So that's that creative thinking that's starting to happen out there that I know other communities are doing, too, and it's making for some very frank and direct conversations with the state. So, Andy, did that kind of help you out a little bit? Are you looking at?
Thank you.
So, you bet.
Anything else for Alden?
Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda, Lisa?
Yeah, we're going, Jocelyn is going to talk in the supervisor's report. I asked her to talk about our Blueprint 2.0 outdoor rec plan, but maybe if she doesn't mind, she can also update you on our conference call with Balcom and Green about the water rights.
Okay. No, we'll get to that in a second. Public hearings. I thought, I thought we-
Have to wait thirty days to-
Okay. Committee and board meetings from the council? I don't think I have-
The CNCC, that-
Community networking meeting today.
Yeah, that was a really good eye-opening that the college is looking to, I say diversify, but they're open to maybe new types of training and certifications, different programs, and they're actually soliciting ideas from the community if there's certain training needs, you know, that they could help with. So, just trying to diversify and become, you know, not just degree programs, but offer certifications as well. So anything that we can do to support them, I think it'd be helpful. And they're trying to bridge that gap where they come down the hill and we go up the hill and have more interface between what we do and they do.
Was there any discussion about, like, the tech side of things, like computer programming, anything, anything along those lines? Do you know?
Not so much that, no. They talked about a welding program and other kind of vocational, technical, but just, they're thinking out the box. So if you have anything, you know, share it with Ron or anybody, any contacts you have at the college.
And I actually asked the VP that spoke today to come and talk to the council in January, so they can kind of give us a summary of all the input they got. And that'd be a great opportunity for us to talk to them about any ideas that the town council has, or-
Is that a, is that an open window? I mean, like, you can just kind of write them an email or at any time?
Oh, sure, sure, sure. But they're going to be working on it, you know, for a while, but I just asked you to come and talk to the town council because they'd like to start interacting more with, you know, the different entities and also community members, so. But I agree with Matt. It was a really good meeting.
Any other reports for, from council members?
So, I was at AGNC the twenty-third? No, fourteenth, sorry, fourteenth. And we had a really cool conversation there. The Department of, it's CDOT, but it's the aviation, the air nautical division. They came and talked to us about, like, a lot of funding that's available through that for airport development and stuff like that, so. It's a tool we can really, I think, open up some conversation with, because we have had some serious conversations about what we can do to help the airport, to try to bring in businesses, stuff like that. Like, they're, they're really open to helping and they have a pretty good. From his presentation, it sounds like they have a pretty strong revenue stream and are pretty willing to help in communities they can. It's, it was pretty interesting. They're getting very virtual with their calls, not call centers, what are they called? The towers?
Patrol towers.
Patrol towers, yeah. Like, it was crazy. They were showing us pictures of it. It was pretty cool, but. The other thing was, we talked a lot about the transition team and stuff like that, and we better be on our toes. Things could get real ugly real quick around here. So, just pay attention, what's going on. Be ready, because it's scary. Sorry, not to, not to be a Debbie Downer, but whatever.
It is what it is.
Debbie, I appreciate it. Yeah.
Anything else from the council? Supervisor's reports, we'll put you in right here, Jocelyn.
Okay, so, I think the first thing Lisa asked me to talk about was the water rights issue. So every six years, we have to do due diligence on our water rights. And we file an annual report with DNR regarding our water usage, what we divert at the river pump station for the water plant and the eastern irrigation system, what we divert at Camper Park for the main part of the raw water irrigation system, and then a small system that we have at the wastewater treatment plant. And so we'll be submitting those numbers for two thousand and eighteen in the next couple of weeks. But as part of that due diligence, Peter had hired SGM engineers and Balcom and Green, which is a law firm that does water rights issues, to prepare our response or our application to maintain the conditional rights that we have. And I didn't bring the exact numbers with, with me, but we have quite a number of CFS that is absolute right that we use for the water treatment plant and the raw water irrigation system. But we have three point one CFS that we have maintained for, you know, recent past as conditional rights. And so that's the part that we're required to do due diligence on and demonstrate that we have a plan to divert and beneficially use that. And to my knowledge, we are not using all of that now. So we had a water commissioner come up last week and we gave her a tour and showed her the things that we're doing that will increase the consumption of that part of the conditional right. For example, you know, in the last couple of years, we've been doing work at the wastewater treatment plant. We dredged Pond A and relined it. And so a lot of the area that would normally be irrigated to create grassy berms for flood control have not been doing so, because we didn't want to add water to the sludge that we were trying to dry. That didn't make any sense, so. Part of the problem is, we do not have an actual flow measuring device for that system at the wastewater plant and that's coming out of the river right there at the little park. So part of Don's plan is to add, to upgrade the equipment and add a flow measuring device there, so we have a definitive way of calculating and showing what they're, we're using there. But we also told them that we have every intention of expanding the irrigation system throughout the wastewater plant to use more water there and restore the green berms, et cetera. But we also need to demonstrate a plan to either use that water for industrial purposes, or I think they call it piscatorial and recreation purposes, so swimming or recreation. So while the commissioner was here, we had quite a long talk with her about the work we've done to try to start thinking about developing additional river access points, which would allow recreational use of that water going past town. And we've, we've also talked about, I mean, there's quite a number of options. One of them is to file an application to divert that water at Camper Park instead of at the wastewater plant. And that's, that, that water right, or that quantity, is basically the volume that the wastewater plant produces and discharges right there. So they really want us to use it there or downstream of there. But if we could adequately show a need for it in the raw water irrigation system diverted at Camper Park, we could conceivably apply to change that point of diversion and use it there. We also had submitted a map that talks about long-term growth and development of Rangel and using that as a justification. But I think really where they're getting to, or the point they're at, is saying, you've been, you know, asking to maintain this as a conditional right for a long time. You have to show that you have plans to divert it and put it to beneficial reuse, and it sounds like they're getting impatient with us doing that. So part of the work with the engineer and the lawyer is to kind of decide what the most effective diversions and uses would be, and then to make that application to continue to have access to those water rights. So we'll be working on that in, starting next week, to develop that response to DNR. And we probably should have a work session, or at least a discussion, about, you know, the costs and benefits of the options that we have there. One of the alternatives we have is to continue to maintain that as an industrial water source. You know, as Peter pointed out before he left, we have no more platted industrially zoned land in, in Rangel, is my understanding. And so if we were to make industrial water available, or if it were available and we looked at some different land use zoning and changes, we could encourage some other industrial growth with access to that water right. So that's one opportunity. The other things we need to look at is whether we want to develop an increased and larger irrigation system or distribution system for that water at the wastewater plant where it's presently being diverted, or whether it's more cost-effective for us to apply to have it diverted at Camper Park where we already have pumps and pipelines and a way to get that water into the raw water system more quickly and demonstrate the ability to use it that way. So we've got some discussions and decisions that will have to be made in probably the next two weeks to thirty days timeframe that we have to respond to the state engineer's request for additional information as part of our due diligence package. So I think that's what Alden was alluding to a little bit, and if there's a way to demonstrate recreational use via the reservoir, to me, that seems a little bit of a stretch, since it's significantly upstream and that right that we have right now is at the wastewater plant. But we can look into the feasibility of applying to relocate that point of diversion. That's my alternative. So those are the things we're looking at for the water rights. And I'm happy to talk to anyone that has issues or questions at any point.
How much raw water do we pull out? I'm guessing the CFS is daily, or that would be, yeah, is that a daily figure?
Cubic feet per second. So, you know, you calculate it based on the number of seconds in a year and an annual, you know, rate.
So it's just a flow rate? What are we pulling out of raw water right now?
I want to say a couple hundred million gallons.
Yeah, because the golf course uses a ton.
Right.
So I guess what I'm getting at is, it's my understanding, there's a study, we, like, the town's actually paid for a study for a raw water irrigation system in town, correct?
And we discussed that with the lawyers about the raw water, and that's why we were talking about diverting those rights to the raw water station rather than this, you have to do, use them there rather than at the sewer plant. And we do have a study.
Okay, and I guess what I'm trying to put together is how much of that would accommodate the three point one CFS?
Three point one CFS isn't really all that much water. I didn't bring, you know, numbers to tell you how many acre feet that is, et cetera. We have a much greater overall absolute right for our drinking water system and our existing raw water irrigation system. So that three point one is, you know, a very small percentage of what we are using now. But clearly, we would like to not lose it if we can make that so. So, again, we're going to have to look at the feasibility of expanding the distribution system at the wastewater plant for other uses right around that facility or nearby, which would involve building additional distribution piping, et cetera, or request to be able to divert it at Camper Park instead, put it into our existing raw water irrigation system, and then expand the commercial and town entities that could have access to it, which would increase the demand for it. And to me, just back of the envelope analysis, that is a quicker and more cost-effective way to do it, because the distribution system and pumping facilities are already in place. And we have people clamoring to get on the raw water irrigation system. So that's probably going to be my recommended approach to it.
We have people write along the existing system without even expanding it out. We've got churches and, that we could go to pretty easily and expand the system without putting in more infrastructure.
I guess that's my question, is, is that enough? If we did just those, would that cover the three point one CFS, or?
I, I believe so. Andy, again, I need to run some calculations to more accurately answer that, but I believe we, we could do that relatively easily.
What about looking at a full-scale raw water to every citizen in town type project?
That would require pretty dramatic development of, you know, a separate distribution system, which is really expensive.
Right, and I understand that, but don't owe us lots of money, so.
Plus, remember, too, if you take it out of potable water, we might have to increase our potable prices in order to, I mean, there's always a fine line to, you know-
Yeah, but water rights are something you don't want to lose.
Last one.
Right.
We could put the study together where we were looking at putting in a raw water distribution system to every citizen where we can keep our CF-
That study is already done. We already have that study, the raw water-
Is there any way we can get that pushed?
Right, right.
We could have a multi-phase development where, in, where we could afford it, you know, but still maintain it eventually, we will, we will utilize the three point one. Is there any way that we can, you know, I know there's been a lot of discussion with Alden about the reservoir and, and for them to be able to get the rights to the water to fill the reservoir initially. I mean, can we defer our rights temporarily to that project?
Not sure if we can with conditional rights, Matt. I, I don't know enough about it to be able to answer that question. I think-
Is that where we could do our part to help fill the reservoir?
Right. I, I think if we can show that we have a plan in the near future to utilize that three point one, then we can hold on to our rights and allow its use in other ways until we create the, you know, the piping system and the, whatever it is that we need to beneficially use it ourselves, is my understanding, but that's something that I'll be finding out more about in the next week or ten days as we start working on this. You know, my recommendation, just off the cuff, would be demonstrate that we can get it into our existing raw water system and use it that way until a higher use comes along, like supporting an industrial activity. You know, possibly, for example, at the old Moon Lake facility, a little bit downstream. Something like that, and preserving the right to change the use of it as the town sees fit, as things change and develop over, you know, the next five to twenty years. So, and I need to look back at the wording, because I think that right was originally developed and has been maintained with a recreation piscatorial and industrial bent to it. And so irrigation might be a lower priority use for the state, so we have to weigh those things. Will we be successful in our application if we choose the use that is lower value to them? Or would it be better for us to pursue one of the higher value uses, even if it's more expensive or could take us longer to develop the absolute way to do that? So, you know, these are really important questions that we'll be answering in the next couple of weeks as we look into this more.
Yeah, we could develop some green zones in the areas where we already have water available, you know, and they could use that up. And just-
Footpaths, things like that.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll get some hemp farmers in town.
And we may want to, and we may want to preserve the ability to do that by having an industrial or a, you know, agricultural right to do that. So we're going to look at all those options and figure out what makes the most sense for us and, and try to look in the crystal ball and figure out what, what is it that they want, you know? What, what is the best answer to this open-ended question they're asking us? And what's going to get us the long-term access to those rights and to maintain those, those rights?
We can't let them take it, because they'll, we'll never get it back.
I agree. I agree. So we're going to have to make some decisions on, you know, cost benefit. What are we willing to spend to use it as soon as possible to demonstrate that we have a need for it while maintaining our ability to use it in other ways as we, you know, down the road? So the other thing that you wanted me to talk about, Lisa, was Blueprint 2.0? Sure. So this Friday at noon at the hospital, the CU students will be presenting their final report on their Blueprint 2.0 Recreation Program Development Recommendations. And anyone who is available over the noon hour, we would love for you to be there and hear what they have to say. We've had a pretty good community turnout for the meetings that we've had so far and a lot of interest in, in what they're proposing. And I, I think I know a little- far and a lot of interest in what they're proposing. And I think I know a little bit about what they're going to propose, but I don't want to take words out of their mouth. So I think you should come hear it from them. But I think the direction they're going is calling Rangeley the Tire Getaway of Colorado. So, you know, they started out calling it Tire Sports Getaway. They started out wanting to call us the Tire Sports Capital, but they didn't want to imply that, I'm not sure how to word this best, that it's still kind of quiet and you won't run into ten bazillion people the way you would in Moab if you came here for your Tire Sports, Tire Sports Getaway. So they're really trying to put some subtle but powerful spins on it, that there's still, you know, tremendous opportunities for, you know, wilderness and quiet and not being overrun by people out there while being able to pursue HOVs or mountain biking or motorsports or, you know, any, anything that has a tire, basically. And looking at developing festivals that highlight each of those uses and specific times when each of them would be highlighted and bringing in the different user groups and interest groups to partake in those and kind of trying to, you know, be many things to many interested user groups. And they've got a lot of good ideas. They're sort of thinking outside the box. And I'm really looking forward to hearing what they have to say and seeing what they came up with. The one other thing I just wanted to let you know, the BLM Travel Management Plan, you know, is an ongoing process, and they were requesting comments. And I commented, I think in October, and as a result of those comments, one of the things they were proposing to do is take some BLM parcels that are along the river and close them. And I said, wait, wait, wait. We don't have very much public land along the river. Please don't close what we have. And I submitted comments about that. And as a result of those comments, they've tentatively scheduled a field day up here on December nineteenth with, like, BLM biologists and the people doing the travel management plan in Kent Multer to go look at those river parcels, like at Olive Garden, and I think they're calling it Hardway Tract Downriver. I think that's over near Texas Beach, and look at, you know, what biological reasons they have for wanting to close it and how they could accommodate still providing access to portions of it while allowing, you know, flora or fauna to still reestablish in places. So that's tentatively scheduled right now. And we'll be talking to them about some of the other travel management plan aspects, trail development, et cetera, et cetera. So if any of you have any comments or things you want me to impart to them during that time, I'd welcome the opportunity to do that.
Did you say that was December nineteenth?
December nineteenth, nine thirty to three is what we're looking at right now.
Are you meeting here first?
Um, I don't have a.
Set schedule.
Yeah, I don't have a set schedule yet. Andy, we can request them to if that's something that would be beneficial.
We'll see.
They were calling it a field day, so they wanted to be out in the field looking at those sites and explaining why they think they should be closed and giving us an opportunity to say why we think they should remain open.
I mean, just show up and give them an earful anyway.
Well, you know, I'm sort of impressed that they even listened to the comments. So we'll see. At least they didn't completely ignore us.
Thank you for doing that because Texas Beach is something that is widely used by people here. And that would be something that is very negative. So.
I believe they recently closed off those two areas right there on the other side of the river that Chevron recently reclaimed so the vegetation would grow back. I know it's been fenced or it's going to be fenced to limit access to it.
Where are you talking about, Matt? Down by Texas Beach?
No, up across, just, I guess, east of the Green White River Bridge.
Uh huh.
So we had two sites that were reclaimed.
Right.
And we had to do extensive cleanup on the river in two areas. And, you know, we've reseeded those areas and it's, to me, it would be a great park, you know, and access to the river. And, but, you know, of course, you got to let it stabilize and establish growth.
I think at least one of those sites is what they're calling the Olive Garden. I could be wrong, but.
Yeah, I mean, I can see why it needs to temporarily be closed so it can establish vegetation, so it won't all wash off into the river. But
Right.
At some point in time, it needs to be opened back to the public for our use.
Well, I went out and looked at each of the tracks. There's three tracks and two of them are in Rangeley. One of them is upriver, so I didn't go look there. But I did go look at those two tracks and, you know, gave some specific comments on both those things. But again, there's so much private ownership along the river and so little public access that I really don't want to give up any public lands' access without a fight. So we'll see where it gets us. It's the best we can do. Anything else you want me to talk about, Lisa?
The nineteenth at three, at ten o'clock?
Nineteenth from nine thirty to three. They're giving me most of the day. And I think the plan is to go to each site and talk about pros and cons and whys and why nots. Thank you.
Okay, so we did get a letter from Rio Blanco County. We were successful with our grant application for White River Village. So we have a grant of twelve thousand five to help with renovations of some of those apartments. I'm working on the final submission for the Tanglewood Project. We came in under budget by a thousand and some cents dollars, so we're going to get the most that we can out of that, thanks to Joslyn Left, her and Jeff working on it.
I see.
Unfortunately, our two dispatch trainees decided that they wanted to pursue other careers other than dispatch. So we have three dispatchers now. We've talked to Anthony, and they're going to take some of the calls for the week, and we'll be working on hiring new dispatchers. They're willing to do that for no cost right now, so that's great.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, offering from the county. Be sure to thank Anthony for that.
Yeah, for sure.
And we'll get through it. We're going to advertise again and see. Sometimes dispatching's just not for everybody. One decided on just something they wanted to do rather than a shift work, and the other one just decided dispatching was not for them. So we'll move forward with that. We're working on finalizing the synergy agreement, just taking time to get the survey done and finish up those paperwork. I laid this out, the Rio Blanco Small Business Development Center, they're going to start some different workshops on December seventh, how to start a business, December tenth, end of year taxation workshop, and January twenty-fifth, how to have an online business presence workshop. Michaela, who is Caitlin's helper, she's going to start coming down to Rangeley at least once a week, tentatively, they thought, on Tuesdays, but that could change. And they're actually going to be in the town hall rather than across from Connie. I think they're having some connectivity problems to the county's internet, so they were going to work from here. Since Jeff doesn't seem to want to occupy that office, they're going to take it over. So hopefully, they'll be in here weekly to be of assistance to businesses that are already established or, you know, people that would like to start new endeavors. Shop and dine is going hard and heavy this week. We've had very little participation, and now everybody's showing up. So we'll be finishing that out on Friday, and they can spend those before Monday or by Monday. So I can give you a better report on that after we get finished. I think that's about all I have right now. Do you guys have any questions about anything else that you may have heard or want to talk about?
Did we get an update on the cell tower at all since I asked you about it?
Yeah. So I, I've been haranguing everyone I can find. I was given one name by the original engineer working on it. I called her. She said she's not responsible for it. She referred me back to the original site acquisition person with Black and Veatch. I emailed and called her. She said, no, it isn't active as of last week. And she would get back to me. I haven't heard back from them. I, sometimes I have five bars and sometimes I have zero bars, so I can't tell. And I have not been able to get ahold of anyone who can tell me, and I'm, makes me crazy. I'm still working on it.
Oh, can we maybe just do like a, I don't know what the best way to handle that, but to where the public knows, because that's a lot of people.
We can post it out on Facebook or also on our website.
Right, or something, once we know for sure it's live.
As I told Andy, we're getting paid for it, but, I mean, we still don't have the service.
Right. And that's, that's what I keep getting hit up on is, I'm like, yeah, I get asked that all the time. So that would just be, I think, a nice thing to do once it is up and live, just post it there so everybody knows.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Cool. That's it. Thank you. Is that it, Lisa?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have questions for Lisa?
Moving on, old business. I don't think we have anything there. New business. Item A, discussion and action to approve the application for a DOLA Energy Impact Assistance Tier One grant for seventy-five thousand to fund the collection systems improvement project budgeted in two thousand nineteen for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
He kind of gave you a little brief summary. Also, this is her.
So, so basically, gentlemen, you know, last year, we did a project on the collection system. Pretty much, you know, from two thousand eleven to two thousand sixteen or seventeen, much of our time, attention, and resources were going into the water treatment plant. And the utilities group had money budgeted every year to do wastewater collections and treatment plant work, and we didn't do them. And what we don't want to have happen is deferred maintenance turn into capital costs. So last year, we, you know, overcame inertia, got the ball rolling, did our highest priority, most problematic manhole replacements. This year, Donna and I sat down and scoped out the tasks that we really feel we need to pursue this year. And I'm in the process of starting to put together that grant application right now. We are trying to keep the dollar value low, understanding, you know, the budget situation for the town, but really don't want to lose the momentum that we're starting, need to maintain that, and do have some problem areas both at the treatment plant and in the collection system that we'd really like to work on each year. So we're trying to balance, you know, budget with need.
We had a conversation about this in the work session. This is, we're talking about White Avenue, right? The collection stuff on White Avenue?
Well, no, it's, we've got, I've got eight or nine manholes identified in various parts of town. I've got two or three projects at the wastewater treatment plant identified, so it's.
This is multiple.
Yeah.
It might not all happen next year. This is probably all addressed.
Right. Well, what we're looking at doing is trying to have the engineering done for a fairly broad, five-item scope. And then when we go to bid, figuring out based on this hundred and fifty thousand, if we get it, how much of that, of those bid items we can actually accomplish with that amount of money. So we would not exceed that. And then we'd have the engineering done, so it would be easier to pursue additional grant cycles, you know, later on. They are always happier when you're shovel-ready, and we would be shovel-ready at that point.
So this is in the budget for two thousand nineteen?
That is in the budget, and we also put the revenue in there as if we would receive it as well.
Okay.
Yeah, part of the grant application requirements are saying that we presented it at a town council meeting, and that town council approved our pursuing the application. So that's what we're doing here.
Well, then I'll make a motion to approve the application for the DOLA Energy Impact Assistance Tier One Grant for seventy-five thousand dollars to fund the collection systems improvement project budgeted in two thousand nineteen for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second. Motion is made by Andy, second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion action to approve a contribution of fifteen hundred dollars to Western Rio Blanco Park and Rec District to help fund Christmas Fest. Thanks for your patience and welcome. Will you guys let us know what you're looking for this year?
Do you have to stand up here and talk to the microphone?
Yep, and you got to say your name.
Okay. I am Bethany Green with the Rec Center. This is Kirsten Kushman. Fielder. Kirsten Fielder. Oh, it was Kushman. We are gearing up for Christmas Fest in about a week and a half. One of the events that go along with it is a carriage ride with a chili dinner, hot chocolate smores bar. It takes place up on La Mesa. Ryan Hewitt with Wildlife Expressions donates all the chili dinner, hot chocolate, location, smores. And we've done one carriage ride for the past couple of years. Last year, with your guys' donation, we were able to purchase a second or rent a second carriage, which helped things move along a little bit smoother. We had about three hundred people attend that part of Christmas Fest last year. So we're just asking you guys if you'd be willing to sponsor, pay for the second carriage, which is about twelve hundred dollars.
And I asked Lisa before the meeting what we did last year for Christmas Fest, and we did fifteen hundred, so.
We do have a breakdown, if you guys want to see it, for the cost of the carriages.
So the profits made off of this go to the Recreation District?
There's no, it's free to the community, so there's no charge to anybody. It's just, it's all free.
The lawsuits go to the.
I thought there'd be donations or something.
People tip the carriage drivers, but the Rec Center doesn't take in any profit from Christmas Fest. It's just like a free community holiday weekend.
Are you guys seeing annual growth in it every year?
Yes. Yeah, definitely.
And, yeah, we're on the same page. Usage, yeah, people doing it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the contribution of fifteen hundred dollars to Rio Blanco Park and Rec.
Second.
Hold on, I'll, uh.
Yeah.
It says fifteen here.
It says fifteen here. I think they're asking.
That's what we had on.
That is what you guys gave us last year, yeah.
I mean, you can change that.
Oh, you're changing that to twelve?
To twelve is, but if you want to give more, we'll take it.
Can you use the rest?
Um, yeah, I mean, we do a breakfast with Sienna that we purchase all of the breakfast items and a little gift for the kids. And what else do we got going on this year? Snowflake Baby Contest, which is a little competition event for the kids to get out there in their little Christmas vest. And we have little gifts for those guys, too. So it would get used, yes.
Sounds like money will spend to me. Sounds like that to me as well.
Where will they come out, Lisa?
Economic development.
Okay.
So a motion's been made for the contribution of fifteen hundred dollars to the Rec Center in a second by Rich. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Hope to see you there.
Tyson better be there.
I'm doing a movie at my house.
Item C, discussion action to approve October two thousand eighteen financial summary. Anybody having questions for Lisa or Mary Bell?
I'll make a motion to approve October two thousand eighteen financial summary.
Second. Motion's been made by Tyson, second by Rich. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think item fifteen, did you have anything, Lisa, on A, B, C, or D? I mean, we went over most of them, didn't we?
No, those were just, just wanted you to see the thank you notes that we got. And obviously, Joslyn talked about the meeting on Friday. And also, we're having our staff Christmas party on the seventh. And just really like everybody RSVP if you're going to be able to be there. We use our junk metal money to help fund. We use our junk metal money to help fund the party.
When is, where's the party going to be, Lisa?
At the Elks.
On the seventh?
Yes.
Go ahead and put myself and my wife down for that. And if she's working, I'll just find somebody else to take.
Yeah, and just let us know anytime.
Okay. Same board vacancies, the announcements are there. Is there anything else that needs to be brought before the council? We'll adjourn at seven fifty.